All right, Smart, we have you, Councilor Ocholi, can you just stay here?
Smart, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yes, good. Yeah, I'm here.
All right, Gretchen is not on yet, so mark that as absent, Councilor Paulson?
Here.
Councilor Fender?
Here.
Councilor Platt?
Here.
The new, soon to be, Councilor Thompson?
Here.
And Mayor Gibson?
I'm here.
All right.
At present.
The time is, I have 5:34, does that coincide?
Yes, I have 5:36, but maybe I guess.
Okay, so our first order of business here is to conduct an oath for Councilor Thompson. So, Councilor Thompson, could I have you raise your right hand and repeat after me? Do you happen to have this fine piece of paper in front of you?
No, I don't.
All right.
Well, it is now, I can see it right there.
Okay, well, you're gonna have to follow me on this, okay? So, have you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Shawna Thompson.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
Faithfully fulfill and discharge.
Duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
And the ordinances of the City of King City.
Congratulations, Shawna.
Yay!
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
It's a brand-new way of swearing in a counselor here, so.
Well, this is, first, is, we can say that it's never been done this way, ever. Well, that's wonderful, Shawna, welcome aboard, we're glad you are here.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Okay, so that was the first order of business, you are official now, and we can go ahead and get started. Ronnie, can you put up the agenda? For me, please?
Well, I have it right here, if we want to just, really, we're here. Ken, you want to just, you want me to just take a lead here on this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can, because I don't have it in front of me, I thought we were gonna post it.
So, we don't have any special presentations, we don't have any minutes. The next item is the open forum. For those that wish to provide any public testimony or comment, now is your time. There's a couple ways that you can do it. You can enter something in the chatroom saying that you have a question, or you can speak up now. We'll give you about 15 seconds to chime in, if we don't hear from anybody, then we'll move on.
Well, it sounds like somebody has something to say.
I think it sounds like you're, I think I have something to add.
Mary wants to add.
I think William wants to add something, but he doesn't, unfortunately, he doesn't have the voice yet.
I'm pretty sure he has something to say.
All right, I just unmuted a few people that were on you on the phone, so if you have public comments, go ahead and state your name and your address. Mr. Mayor, we have no public comments at this moment.
I'm just gonna mute everyone on the outside there.
Typically, we would do.
Is that your house, Jamie?
That is not my house, this is not my house. I just find this very funny, and I appreciate it.
Are you guys talking about the squeaking, it's my dog next to me.
Oh, is that a correct? I thought maybe we, you know, someone was making a statement, right?
Well, on the business at hand, Mr. Mayor.
Typically, we would do a moment of silence, I was thinking about a moment of silence. And I don't know about you guys, but I watched the memorial service for George Floyd yesterday. They did a moment of silence, eight minutes and 46 seconds, which is the equivalent of the time that the officer had his knee on his neck. I was, my mind was blown how long eight minutes and 46 seconds of silence felt. I'm not gonna do that to us, but it was almost heartbreaking to get the sense of how long that was, how long it took to take his life. So, we're gonna do a moment of silence, but it won't be eight minutes and 46 seconds. We have a lot to contemplate, we have a lot to think about, we have a lot to resolve as leaders. And so, a moment of silence, just to reflect. Okay, let's get started. Next up, Mike?
All right, well, we have our new business, which is Resolution 20-10. It's a resolution renouncing racist violence. You know, Ken, you had contacted me on Wednesday. I think we all know how heavy this has been weighing on all of our hearts and seeing, I think we're on the 10th day of protests across this country, 10th or 11th day of protests across this country. And, you know, just trying to put a word out there, because as leaders, as appointed and elected officials, it's our job to take a stand on these sort of bases. So, if you'd like, I can read this resolution.
Before you read it, Mike, let me say something, and I do want you to read it. But I need to really make a statement about how I feel like, feel about policing. When I see these kinds of things happening, a lot of people automatically go to the bottom line of policing being the problem, that the police are the bad guys. Anytime I see these kinds of situations, I feel like it's a leadership problem. You will always have employees at any level, in any kind of organization, that will do wrong. It's incumbent upon leadership to deal with these things. I know it becomes complicated when you're talking about the police force, the strong unions in support of what police do or don't do. And it's a difficult thing, but at the same time, I strongly believe that these kinds of situations are minimized when the leadership addresses the issues in the very early stages of these kinds of behavior. This officer who committed this murder, this wasn't his first infraction. This was not the first time that this individual had been involved in suspect behavior. I think the number is somewhere around 16 instances of questionable behavior. Though it is incumbent upon us as leaders to understand this one truth, is that when something occurs, you have got to deal with it. And you've got to deal with it straight up, on time, without any lollygagging around, and get to the point, and understand the facts, and understand what action needs to be taken. I'm confident that in my tenure, with the King City Police Department, we will never have to do this, I'm confident of that. I am confident that this has never occurred in King City with this force. I'm confident of the leadership of Ernie, Brian, Lieutenant Brian, and Mike, that everyone on this force understands what the expectations are, and what it is to treat people equally, with fairness, and the utmost respect. There's some bad people out there, there's some bad guys out there, there's some bad women out there. There's some dangerous folks out there that you have to deal with, no question. But it starts with respect, it starts with community policing, and understanding the role and the expectation that we want to represent. And I'm not shy, I'm not bashful from addressing hard, tough issues. And I think we all have to be that way. And a good case in point, a good example, is what happened in West Lynn. And I think all of you must know about the West Lynn situation, where they harassed this black man. They tried to damage him, they didn't kill him, but they sure tried to damage him for some strange reason of a relationship between a police chief and his fishing buddy. And it didn't come out, and it didn't start getting talked about until there was a $600,000 settlement that West Lynn had to pay. To me, that's a leadership problem. I understand charter and all of that, that there's some kind of disconnect between what the city council and mayor have the ability to do in terms of disciplinary action with the police force. It falls, I think, on the city manager, if I read this right, to deal with those kinds of things. But really, the council and the mayor are somewhat powerless in that situation. But that doesn't mean they couldn't make a lot of noise in order to ensure that the right thing was being done at the right time. And it's still ongoing. It's not settled yet, there's still an investigation going on. Federal investigators are involved in this thing because it didn't get addressed. And that's how these things escalate. So I'm not ever going to, first off, blame the police force across this nation for the bad behavior of one or two people. I will always start at the top, what did you do as a leader? What did we do as leaders to make sure that whatever occurred was addressed? So, that's my position on this. We have got to state, the way Mike is getting ready to read the resolution, that we stand against racism, bigotry, brutality of any kind, and we won't sway from that position, absolutely not. So, Mike, I think Gretchen just called me.
Okay.
Let me see if I can reach out to her right quick.
Yeah, give me one second, I have someone at the door, too.
Okay. Does anybody have anything to add to what I'm saying? Brian, Ernie?
Yeah, I would just say that I have met with all but one of the officers so far. Still trying to corner this last one, it's tough to cross paths when they're this small. But there's one thing that resonates unanimously, and that's where all.
Brian, hold on just one second, Gretchen, are you, are you having trouble getting in? Well, everybody, everybody else got in, I don't know. Maybe Ronnie can stand by and see if he can help you, but we're all on, okay? We've already started. Okay, do you want to just call in? Okay, I will, okay. Ronnie? Can you call Gretchen, please? All right, I'm sorry, Brian.
That's okay, I was just saying, I've been, over the last several days, meeting with the officers, and I've gotten in touch with all but one, and it's all unanimous. I mean, we're all hurt, we're hurt real bad, and, you know, unanimously agree that we're, we're just, we condemn those actions, and we're disgusted by it, and we're, we stand with, you know, people that stand against it. And, you know, if we feel like we're set back, it hurts, hurts to see something like this happen. So, we're with everybody, standing against it.
Ernie?
No, and I think you covered everything really well, Ken, it's just that it's, it's something that, you know, we're attempting to address, and it's something, you know, we, city of, and you hit the nail on the head, we've created and have done what I think is a wonderful job as far as, you know, our diverse community goes, and it's something that we've strived to do and be better every day. And so I think it's something that we're all working on this, we all have a lot to learn. And it's something that just, as we go, we just have to be, we have to be better and keep setting example.
Anybody else?
I think, you know, I think, one of the things that's so tragic right now is, you know, I, you guys know how much I love KCPD, and how much my kids love KCPD. And what's so sad is, you know, when, when my kids come down, go out the street, and they see the police car go up by, or they see a police officer approach them, right? Those are their heroes, and it's such a warm and exciting feeling for the boys. And just to know that, right, there could be kids in this community that don't feel that way, that that's not their experience, and how, you know, I just, I want to always fight against the kind of vacuum that we can find ourselves in, that, right, my experience just isn't everyone else's experience. And how do we, how do we continually strive to, kind of, you know, continue to, to build those connections with all the members of our, of our community? And I think, you know, you guys do an excellent job reaching out to Deer Creek. You know, we, Deer Creek just put out a statement, you know, we have a very high number of diverse students at Deer Creek, much higher than I think I understood. And it, it really, learning that made me so happy because of how involved KCPD is in with Deer Creek going to their school functions, right, having a presence, and it's always positive, and it's, my heart just breaks right now.
Yeah, and I'll say, Jamie, that, like, for example, yesterday, we spent two hours, we actually drove by every single student's house last night.
Yeah.
To wave to them, so we went, we actually went into Twolleton and Tigard to make sure we hit every single kid's house from Deer Creek.
Yeah.
Wow, that's great, that's great, that's great. Anybody else? Thank you, Jamie.
Hey, Ken, this is Micah, I just, just wanted to note, my hope is that we can continue a very open dialogue between us, the citizens, and, and the police. I had a brief exchange with, with Brian last week after this started. And Brian, I just wanted to note that I really appreciate the, the conversation, and I look forward to more. I really hope that we can, as Jamie said, I think we, we have a tendency to note that we have a fantastic community, and the way that we, we look at it personally may be different from the way that others in, in the community look at it. And I, I think it's very important that we continue dialogue between our whole community about this issue. Because this is something that, you know, it has to be addressed. And if it's not addressed, it, it just sits and gets worse.
Yep.
So, I appreciate, appreciate the conversations, and look forward to furthering those conversations more.
And I do, after Mike reads the resolution, I want to talk about the other side of this, you know, to step away from policing, and then we need to have an honest conversation about the struggle of black people in this country.
Absolutely.
To have that conversation, so, anybody else have a comment to make?
Yeah, this is Smart. I agree with everyone, and I just want to say, we will continue to, we will continue to honor and give our law enforcement officers the support that they need, because this is not an easy task, that they have been tasked to do, protect the citizens, and at the same time, be able to go back home safely to their families at the end of the day. So, it's a, it's a very, it's a very difficult situation that they're all finding themselves in. And again, it comes down to communication, it comes down to training, it comes down to a lot of things that we all need to work together as a community, in supporting them for what they do, that way they can get their jobs done, and get all the support that they need to do it in a way that protects, provides the support, and the, and the security that we're asking them, we're taxing them to put up for us, and to make the place safe for us, and our families, and everyone else. So, I appreciate everything that they're doing, and I appreciate everything that's going into this. We'll continue working on it as a nation, and, and it's not, it's not an easy task, but again, it's, it's something that we need to talk and continue to work on, thank you.
All right, thank you, Smart. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mike, why don't you read the resolution in, and?
All right, give me just one second, I'm gonna bring up and share my screen here.
Okay.
And then we will read this off for everybody. Hey, can everyone see the resolution?
Yeah, I can see it. Eyes aren't that good, but I can.
Yes, I can see it.
All right, so I'll go ahead and read it, Resolution R. 2020-10, A Resolution Renouncing Racist Violence. Recitals, let it be known by this resolution that King City stands in solidarity against the senseless death and racist violence in our country. We stand in solidarity with peoples of color, regardless of race, creed, color, religion, or nationality, in our uniform outrage and disgust over the racist violence and senseless deaths of George Floyd, Tamir Rice, Trevon Martin, Antonio Zambra Montez, Eric Gardner, Freddie Gray, Amico Perez Lopez, Walter Scott, Sandra Bland, Jessica Hernandez, Ahmaud Arbery, Ruben Vipondo, and many, many more. We recognize that this is not just a black problem, but a systemic racist problem affecting all minority groups and people of color in this country. As elected and appointed officials designated to represent all peoples of King City and our surrounding communities, we recognize that this pattern of racist violence, senseless death by force, and all these repetitious violent acts that have preceded and followed the death of George Floyd, uniquely affects people of color with levels of pain, rage, and fear that we may never know the depths of. We stand united in our support for the peaceful protests to the systemic violence that plagues our country. We stand committed to dismantling longstanding systems, programs, policies, and practices that may have historically created obstacles to the success of people of color, members of ethnic groups, and marginalized groups. Included within this commitment is our priority to listen to and work with marginalized community leaders and community organization groups who are led by those most directly affected by these violent practices. We will work with our police department, court systems, along with county, regional, and state governments, as we continue to seek a shared vision of protecting the sanctity of life and the rights of all residents of our city, county, and state. We pledge to extend our ongoing commitment to eliminating any practice or policy that has the effect of disproportionately harming those who are black, indigenous, people of color, or anyone who has been historically marginalized. We say these things as an expression of love, support, and sorrow in the interest of calm and peace during this violent time, all the while acknowledging that the full measure of our success depends on the trust our community places in us through visible actions and leadership. Peace be with you. This resolution passed and adopted this fifth day of June 2020, and takes effect upon passage.
Do we need a motion for approval? So moved.
Shawna, you're muted. Shawna was raising her hand, so, Councilor Platt or Shawna, who wants to take that?
Mike?
Okay.
Oh, I, I move to approve the resolution.
All right.
No second.
Jamie, you're muted.
Sorry, before, before we do that, can I, can I make one, one observation or comment?
Sure.
Okay, I think it's beautifully written, and I wholeheartedly agree with it. I just have two observations, so one is, I should, can we add Breonna Taylor to that? Is there a reason that we've left her off?
No, it's just the list goes on and on, but, yeah, we could, we could add that name, I don't see any reason why not. Do you, do we know the circumstances of that case?
Yeah, she was the first responder who was shot on the.
In her own home.
In her home. She was a warrant, serving a warrant, and she was shot eight times and killed. I think, in fact, today, would have been her 20th birthday.
I just have one other, one other comment. I will, I just wanted to pause at, at the term, it's not a black problem in that first paragraph.
That it's not just a black problem?
Right, and I, I just, I just want to take pause just a second to think about the wording of that. And I just don't, I, I, it might be my own uncomfortableness, I just want to put it out for a discussion, is that, is there, is there a, a better way to phrase that? Is it disrespectful in any way to say it that way, and, right, I?
I think the problem here, Jamie, is that it's not just black Americans that are the, are suffering here. It's also Hispanic, it's also Native Americans, it's, it's all different racial minority groups that have this happening to them. And so, yes, this current situation is a black man who was basically murdered on the streets, and we don't, we don't know what the repercussions of that are gonna be, but we've seen it time and time again. And so, it's, how, how do we word that, I guess? Are you wondering about the sensitivities of that statement?
Well, I'm just, I think, can you put it back up so I can, can you see, put it back up?
Because I'm, I'm wondering, is it the fact that we're not just talking about black people in this?
No, 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 I, it's, it, can you just put it back up real quick? I just want, I'm just, okay. So I, I, no, I, the, I wholeheartedly agree with the sentiment of the sentence. It really is just the term "black problem," like, is that, is that an offensive way to say it's not just an African-American problem? Does the term "black problem," is that offensive, or is it just, okay?
I, I think, you know, that's fine, I mean, those terms are to the point, and, you know, I, I think it has to be said that way. Looking for a different way of saying it, or a different term is probably softening it some, and I'm not interested in doing that.
Sure, no, that, and that's fine, I just, as, I just, I don't, I don't know if me, as in, I would, you know, language is important, and so I, it's hard, you know, I just want to make sure that, I personally don't think I would ever say, oh, that's, that's a white problem, or that's a black problem, or whatever. But I agree with you, I think it's hard to navigate the language in any other way, and be, and not be, you know, clear. I just wanted to take pause and put it out there, so.
And the reality is, is that it is a problem for black men and women, more often than not.
Oh, of course, and I, that, that, I truly just meant the term "black problem." I, I'm not saying, it's not, I'm, I'm not articulating very well, but.
It's difficult to articulate, that's the problem.
No, I understand.
It's, it's a difficult subject.
It is a very difficult subject.
Of course, I just don't want to be offensive in using a term of art that would be offensive to someone without me, you know, if we, I wouldn't want to be offensive by saying "black problem" if someone expected us to say "African-American problem" versus, right, that, so, that's all.
I've been black all myself, I was, I was black before I was African-American. That's, that's the reality, I mean, and, and I'm fine with it.
Well, I appreciate that, right.
I will never be offended by that.
Okay.
Can I jump in?
Sure, there's one.
Maybe what Jamie's.
Maybe what Jamie's, m- maybe another way to word it might be that it's not a singular problem, that it's a, it's a, it's a bigger problem than just one problem. Is that kind of where you're going with that, Jamie? Is, it's not just a singular problem, it's a systemic problem?
Well, it is, but I think we have to say that it is a problem that's plagued in the black community.
Oh, that's a good way to say it.
I mean, it, you know, it, that's what it is, I mean, and I don't even know if I really want to say a black community, because if you say "black community", that means that there's some separation and you have black people living in a community separately. What it really is, it's blacks living within our community.
Yeah, well, black members of our community.
Yeah, I mean.
Great way to say it.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm okay with uh something like that, but I think it has to be said that it is a problem for black people within our communities, that's, I'd be okay with that.
And I guess, I think for me, I think for me, it, so uh. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just wanted to take pause to talk about it, cause, right.
We need to do, that's exactly what we need to do, is to have these conversations. And, you know, so, uh did we finish this piece of it?
Yeah, those are the only, those are the only two things I want to discuss, I don't have any.
Uh so, do we need to change uh the uh motion and the second?
Depends on what we're changing. Um, so, we had a motion, a second, the discussion was to uh request to add uh Breonna Taylor, I think we'd need a vote on that. Um and then we would need a vote on if we want to change that sentence, and then if we want to change the sentence, what do we want to change it to? And does it really make that much difference in the larger scheme of things?
And I'm having to withdraw that.
Yeah, I don't think it makes.
Yeah, the, I don't think the sentence needed to be changed, I just wanted to take pause to discuss, discuss it. Um but I would, I will stick to adding um uh Breonna to the list. I think it's important to acknowledge that uh black women are also affected as well, and I would like to acknowledge her.
I'm okay with that.
Can I, yeah, uh just by show of hands, or.
Can we do a roll call on that one, please?
Yeah, roll call would be best. Um, so let's start with Counselor Thompson, are you okay with adding um um Ms. Taylor to it?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Uh Mr. Platt? Mr. Ocholi?
Yes.
And uh I think that's, and Mr. Gibson, Mayor Gibson?
Yes.
Alright, so uh that's a unanimous add, we will add that name to the final uh draft of the resolution. Um, and then you're withdrawing my second motion, Commissioner Fender?
Yes.
So, um with that, we have a motion, a second, we have a slight amendment, it was approved unanimously. Mayor, if you want to call for a vote or further discussion?
Need further discussion? Well, let's vote. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Mayor, can I call for a ro- uh roll call, please?
Yes, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Counselor Ocholi? Counselor Ocholi, can you hear me?
Yes, my voice is, yes, sorry, my mute button just gives uh, when I hit an itch, it just keeps going back and forth, sorry, yes.
Thank you. Uh Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Counselor Platt?
Yes.
Counselor Fender?
Yes.
Counselor Paulson?
Yes.
Counselor Gibson?
Yes.
Or sorry, Mayor Gibson?
It's okay, I was a counselor before I was a mayor, I think I'm a counselor too.
Yeah, I got into the counselor role there.
I actually was elected as a counselor, is that the way it works? Yes, so you're not wrong.
I'm, I'm in the, out of fact, well, thank you very much, Counselors, uh I think that this is a uh very important piece of legislation, if you will, for our city and for our staff. I, I know it's just a piece of paper, you know, but in the piece of paper is, I think, a good, a good. There, there's a good story in there that uh needs some recognition and needs some attention um in light of our current circumstances. And um it, it's an unfortunate time that we find ourselves in, but hopefully we can push and strive for some improvement from these. So thank, I thank you very much.
Okay, and uh just let me add that the question is always, you know, people ask me, what can I do? And it's a tougher question or. Oh, okay, it's a tougher question to answer for some, more so than others. But I'm under the belief that you, the more you know, the more you can do. And in this day and age, there needs to be an effort for people to know black history. And I understand how people are raised, and I, I will never, this is not saying it is derogatory or it is an issue that if you are raised in an environment as a white person where you don't really have to deal with issues and concerns that black people do, there's still no excuse for you to educate yourself and to know more. You can do more if you know more. For me, at seventy-one years old, you know, I've lived a lot of it. I've lived it through my father, who was a World War Two veteran who went into the war and fought for this country out of Mississippi with no rights as a black man being treated like dirt, and coming back from the war and being treated like dirt again. Then I had this whole group of people who talked about the American flag. What did that mean to him? He never talked to me about it. I just know that it had to be tough. And then you think about the American dream that said, okay, we're gonna make sure that America grows after World War Two. And lo and behold, all of these uh new developments, building new homes that started popping up, and you know what some of the signs said? Restricted. Black people not need, not apply, cause you can't live here. So, what do we do? We moved from uh Louisiana to Seattle. And both my parents worked for Boeing. And they did buy a house, but I guarantee you, they bought a house where they were told, this is the only place you can buy, and it didn't have anything to do with how much money they made. My first experience with the pain of how black people were treated, how many of you know the story of Emmett Till?
Yep.
Okay? Let me just tell you how I became aware of it. Emmett Till was a fourteen-year-old black boy who lived in Chicago, and his parents sent him to Mississippi to spend the summer with relatives. The story goes that somehow it was perceived that he offended a white woman. He whistled at her, or looked at her, or getting across the street when she was walking down. He was dragged off, lynched, and beaten beyond recognition. Fourteen years old. Okay? I became, at that time, this was in nineteen fifty-five, and I was seven years old. There's a black publication called Jet Magazine, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but Emmett Till's mother insisted that they had an open casket and made she want it, it published the unrecognizable figure of her son and what was done to him. And that was the first time I really saw my mother cry about something. I was seven, but that stuck with me, and she was just in tears because it was so painful to see. And you're talking about a woman who had four sons. And this could be one of her sons for no reason. That was my first experience. Fast forward to twenty twenty, you have a black fellow who's jogging in Georgia, and some white guy decide, rather than calling nine-one-one and calling the police to say, we believe this person was involved in some ro- and robberies, they shot him dead. This is twenty twenty. And these are the kinds of things that make black people angry. This is what hurts beyond comprehension. I have a thirteen-year-old grandson, a thirty-two-year-old grandson, and a fifty-year-old son. That can add to any one of us, any one of them, anyone in my family, nephews and brothers, and it's just. It's beyond comprehension that people hate that way. And we have to educate ourselves, we need to know this history. They didn't teach this in uh school, and they don't teach it in school today. The pain and suffering that black people have endured just because we don't look like other people. That's what we need to know, that's how we need to educate. All of this stuff is available to all of us to be able to read about, to be able to see, to be able to know the history of Oregon, if you just want to stay in Oregon, and you know that Oregon was a sundowner state that said that uh black people, you can't be in the downtown areas or the city areas after sunset. You are not allowed. We should know the history of redlining in Oregon, where Lake Oswego said, you can't live here. I don't care how much money you make, you can't live here. I had an old time uh Oregonian, an old black person, eighty years old, said they used to call Lake Oswego "no negro", Lake "no negro" is what it was called to black people. And this is the history, this is the history of our country. I don't know how many of you follow football, but a player by the name of Colin Kaepernick, you wanted to see a peaceful demonstration about this very thing by taking a knee, and he hasn't worked in the NFL since twenty sixteen because people interpreted what he was doing as a slap in the face against the flag and the military, and it had nothing to do with that. It was an opportunity to say, I want to bring to the attention of what's going on in this country. It was peaceful. Nobody was getting hurt, no damage done to buildings or anything else. And lo and behold, they say, well, you disrespect the flag, you're not patriotic, you can't play in the NFL. I wish my father were here so he could talk about how he felt about the flag after fighting in World War Two and what that meant to him. So, educate, educate, these are all things, this is what you can do. You can learn, all of this stuff is available on the internet, do some research on black history. Do some research on these things that make black people angry. I don't care when you were born, if you know somebody in a family member that goes back, you'll know something about this as a black person. Okay? So, please, I can only ask that of you guys, to learn as much as you can. That gives you the o- opportunity to be the kind of leader that says, we know what's going on, and we know that we have to be better, and we know that we have to do something different. Okay?
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome, I mean, it's, these are, have been just overflowing in me throughout this. And I need to talk to my team about it, my team needs to know where I am and how I feel. And it's painful.
Okay, Mayor, have you seen uh the student, the student union of Tiger Twelve and School District and their, their demand for education? Have you seen that, their petition and resolution?
Yeah, I signed on to it, Dean Bowman uh uh sent that to me, and that, that's a good point, that I think every leadership organization is stepping up and making a statement. Uh the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, I signed on to that, uh the Washington County Commissioners uh put out a letter, the sheriffs, uh Pat Garrett and Dan put out a letter, uh we're putting out our, ours, uh Tiger, uh uh Mayor Schneider uh put out a statement and is working uh to try to educate and reach out uh to the community to hear what they have to say. Everybody is doing something. My biggest fear is when does it die down and we go back to doing what we do?
And, and I think we should, we should continue to figure out how, you know, how can we harness this momentum, continue forward and, and create opportunity to engage in more dialogue, engage in discussion, engage in uh, right, education, get involved, and, you know, I know that uh all of us, I, I think support that, we just, I think we need to figure out a way to sustain it, right? And uh, I, I would, I would say, I, I signed off on the um student union, I, I also reached out to them, cause I would love to get some more engagement um with them, so. Um, I uh, I was disappointed that the statement of the police agencies, uh that not every agency, including King City, was given an opportunity to sign off on that. I, I appreciate that they wanted to act swiftly, and I, I commend them for that, and uh certainly our own, I, I think the statement that KCPD put out was um, was also great, I, at some point, it would be nice that the agencies that didn't sign on to the message of that joint statement by the, by the other agencies, I think also sent a message, the wrong message, right, cause I, I, I will be the first one to say, I immediately called Brian and said, why didn't KCPD sign this, right? So, um.
Well, Ernie and I talked about it, and uh he expressed his frustration.
Yeah, well, we can only move forward, right, so, I, I mean, it, you know, it, it is what it is, but uh I'm proud to see everyone kind of stepping up and making statements, and I agree, I hope that we, uh I hope that the men, momentum actually gets some real uh continued results and engagement.
Well, and we're finding out how people feel about this, uh you know, uh and when we met as a group of mayors, the mayors, uh Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium, uh one mayor uh spoke very strongly, he made some other mayor, now, I'm, I was only a black mayor on the call, but the one mayor who said, y- you guys are gonna have to come to bridge with the fact, and I don't, I'm not saying I necessarily agree with what he said, but he was feeling so much emotion about it, he said, all of us white people are racist. We're racist because we're ignorant, and we don't take the time to learn more about the struggle of black people. Not, and I texted him or emailed him later, and I said, I hear what you're saying is strong, strong language. I said, can you imagine what would happen if I said what you said? Whether I agree with you or not, I said, I, you know, there's this uh uh the, the syndrome of an angry black man. It doesn't take much to get into that scenario of being an angry black man, and then people stop listening. He said, well, Ken, if there's anything you want to say and you don't think that you can, I'll say it for you, so I, you know, but it was one of those things. And then there was one mayor who did not sign on. What he said was, he wouldn't sign on because he doesn't think this country is racist, and that this was the absolute wrong thing to do because it was inciting more violence. I don't know where he came up with that, but that was his opinion.
I mean, it's, you know, it's interesting, I don't know, I don't know if we've ever had an opportunity to talk about it, but at, at the Multnomah County, at the, the Multnomah County Bar Association last year, there was a racist. there was uh a racist joke that was made during the introduction of an award ceremony and to the recipient. And it, right there and then, it ca- it caused, uh first of all, there's fifteen hundred kind of attorneys sitting in a room and the way the, the way the joke was presented was very confusing. So initially, there was shock and confusion, um and then no one really knew what to do. And then there was a lot of fallout, the person that made the joke lost their job. The award recipient, which was the attorney, the city attorney of Portland, returned the award because she was silent in the moment and felt uh she had let everyone down by not saying something. And and um a lot of statements were made. What didn't happen though was any discussion amongst the legal community on the listservs or in groups. And I think part of it is because so many people were terrified to 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 enter into dialogue to talk about it because it's clunky and you know, you're vulnerable and you don't know what the right words are to say and all of that and and I, you know.
Okay, I've got to interject because we're running out of time.
Okay.
Alright, so we still have to cover the eight uh point policies uh that were mentioned earlier and that we were discussing. Ernie, you have about five minutes left.
I'm sorry.
To an end.
I apologize for it.
Ernie, you want to take it away, uh you're gonna have to be brave, I apologize.
Yeah, I'll fly through it real quick, yeah, the eight policies uh that were uh sent to me about uh the dealt policies that with, within agencies to reduce violence.
This is the one that we got from uh Weston?
Yeah, so, just real quickly, so the number one, failing to require officers to de-escalate, that's a practice that we already use and uh if I get done quick enough, Brian could talk about the training that he does every year with everybody on that. Um allowing officers to uh choke or strangle civilians. Uh that is not a practice that is taught in Oregon or with the King City Police Department. Now, I will say that if you're in a fight for your life or if deadly force is an option that's a, that has to be used, yes, a chokehold could be used in that, in that circumstance. Um failing to require officers to intervene and stop excessive force, report incidents. Uh that, we feel is that um through our oath of office and our oath of uh conduct and ethics covers that. Next would be the failing to restrict officers from shooting at moving vehicles. Here's the one that uh I probably um will disagree with a little bit and I'll and I'll kind of term it in a a different way. Now, if there is a, somebody who is uh, you know, the deadly force is authorized, there's nowhere to go and they have to shoot at a car to stop it or protect their life or the life of another, um that's something that's uh available to them. Where I think this policy probably, the direction it should have went is don't step in front of a moving vehicle to create your own deadly force situation. And that's the, that's where I'm kind of looking at how that was worked and and I think that that's probably the the direction I should go. Failing to develop a force continuum, I've been in this business since nineteen eighty nine, we've always had that. Failing to require officers to exhaust all reasonable beings, that's something that we practice um as far as the the continuum goes. You know, it's just, it's the, the suspect controls, you know, the level of force that's used, used against them. We use a minimal amount of force to effect an arrest. Failing to require officers to give a verbal before the use of of really worse. Uh that's uh given that's something that's practiced and taught, uh you know, situations where that might not happen. Active shooters, say in a school mall, wherever it's gonna be, you know, where we're actually hunting somebody that's uh actively killing people, there's probably not gonna be a warning given. And, you know, and then just in instances where you roll up on people and this is what's going on. Failing to require officers to report each time they use force, that's something we practice. Um I go over every use of force that's used in King City, uh whether it's approved or or uh not approved. And uh we average less than, probably less than six a year. And that's it.
Okay, Ernie, thanks and I appreciate what you guys are doing, I truly do.
Alright, thank you all very much, Chad, if we want to continue this, uh we could take a recess and reconvene. Counsel or we can.
Well, I just want to make sure that anybody else who has anything they want to add or something that needs to be talked about it. You know, we're, we're here to do that, so um but what do you think? Anybody else have anything to add and?
Mike, I've got no time left.
We have like one minute.
Okay, I, that's all, I need thirty seconds. Well, just want to say, uh every single year, I became a Milo, it's called a Milo instructor over ten years ago. And it's hours of uh very high stress simul- simulation training. Uh putting the officers through, every single year we do this, it's sophisticated equipment we borrow from DP SST. They have guys that drive it around to each PD, this is what they do for a living. Um we put them in a room, uh they they interact with the screen, they they communicate from domestic violence calls to traffic stops to active shooters. Uh Chief and I usually will sit in there, we also participate, but we'll sit in there for the most part, we'll observe. They'll go through um scenario after scenario after scenario after each one. Well, I actually control it based on their verbal de-escalation skills. I can actually have the scene go a different direction. If they do well verbally, it'll go very well, not all the time, but we'll then what they're trained to do is use the least amount of force necessary in that situation. We hope it's verbal, if it has to go step above that, they do. Afterwards, we break it down, we talk about it, we talk about what we could do better, we talk about what well, what went well. And they do dozens and dozens of these every single year and this is ours. And you wouldn't believe how real it feels in this room and I think Mike's experienced it. And I'm not sure if the mayor has or not, but anybody's welcome to come in, I'm I'm getting ready to order it, probably for uh July. And so you guys are welcome to check it out, but it's, it it puts the officer in a real spot.
Okay, I'd love to, yeah.
I'd love to as well.
I would as well.
Okay.
Awesome.
We'll be there.
Well, that, that's what, we do that every single year for hours and hours and they love it, so, and it keeps them on their toes and so yeah, we focus on use of force quite a bit.
Well, thank you, Brian. Uh so the question is, uh either we can end right here or we can come back. Uh if if there's anything that you really want to talk about.
Mayor, we could also do this on June seventeenth, I know we're gonna have a super packed uh meeting on the seventeenth, we could.
When we do our State of the City?
Yes, so we're gonna do the State of the City and then we're gonna, after the State of the City, we're gonna roll into a regular meeting, take care of regular business um after that.
Okay.
So I mean, we can definitely, I mean, we should always have this conversation, so.
Can the, the CCTV just log off and we continue for a minute or do we, it's a big production?
Yeah, why don't we take a few minutes, maybe take a two or three minute break, give uh, give uh TVT.
I just have a question about the State of the Union as well, so.
Okay, oh yeah, we'll, we'll hang on and let you guys have to go, you know, I I don't, I'm certainly don't mind hanging on.
Okay, so uh we will uh break for say five minutes. We'll reconvene at uh six thirty seven.
Okay.
Yeah, that was funny, Jamie, like the clock's ticking and I'm going.
Yeah, I know, well, and you were writing me and I wasn't reading because I was in my zone.
I'm like trying to give subtle hints, I'm like.
I know, you're like, you're like, come on, wrap it up, I'm just thought, oh, we're good. But it is, I mean, I thi- I think the, it was a remarkable issue because so many people had really strong feelings, but no one felt, no one felt safe enough to share their feelings, right? And so, and I think we just have to, right, we have to push back that apprehension that we're going to be perceived a certain way and just have those difficult, clunky conversations, I mean.
Yeah.
Right?
It it really is, I I spent um, well, just the email that I sent out today between you, Ken, Brian and Ernie and I, it's just.
Absolutely.
Trying, trying to find the words and you're going back and forth on the words because it's such a sensitive topic, you know.
Who wrote the resolution?
Mike did.
Mike has beautifully written.
It is, he is absolutely spot on.
Yeah, it was absolutely, it was great and I, you know, and I hope, I hope you didn't, you know. I I.
No, don't worry about it.
I I wasn't being offensive, uh, you know. But it's important, like, you know, when you feel, when you feel uncomfortable, I just think, when, when something raises, I think it's always better just to throw it out there and and talk about it, because, right, like.
Why I talked to Ken too, sorry.
That's what we're all about, I mean, you know, this team, we should be able to talk about anything that's on our mind that we think either needs to be adjusted or express our opinion on a better way to do something or say something. We have to have that ability and we've always had it.
Just, just to chime in on that, I mean, I I think i- in part, it is a responsibility of ours to pose the uncomfortable uh in in our, in our statements and questions, uh and it's I I think in in some ways, it it's I'm struggling for the words, but but i- it is more productive to make a statement that makes us uncomfortable or makes a reader uncomfortable to promote that dialogue than it is to um than it is to try and soften it.
No, I, and and I agree, you know, look, we're in nonpartisan positions, okay? This is nonpartisan, but what I see coming out of the White House is just beyond mind boggling to me.
It's crazy.
We're talking about a leader who just, I mean, I I don't even know how to explain what comes out of his mouth, you know? And and the one that just got me today, where he's talking about the uh employment rate and he's talking, he's actually said that uh George Floyd is probably smiling down on him because of this great day of the improved employment numbers. He said that, I did, it wasn't something that I read, I heard him say that. And and you know, so when I talk about leadership and I'm talking about how we respond to certain situations and how we navigate ourselves through difficult conversation and difficult situations. We don't have it, I mean, I just can't imagine how this can continue, but we'll see. And we don't have the leadership right now that we truly need. Now, what can we do about it? All we can do is vote. We don't have any control over what he says or does, but we vote and that's all we can do. But I can't imagine if I, as the mayor of King City, behaved this way, you guys would have kicked my butt out uh a long time ago, it would not have.
We'll all get in jail.
Yeah, that's right. I might be.
Hey Mike, what time did you say the meeting was gonna restart?
Right about now.
Alright, so Mayor, can we go ahead and recall the uh?
Reconvene.
Oh, Shauna, who's that, Shauna, make introduction, Shauna, come on, uh bring her in, come on, hi.
Hi, how are you?
Oh, I think you're on mute.
We have Brian, little one too.
Yeah, at least let them into.
This is Toshi.
Hi, Toshi.
Oh, wait, there's another one running at us.
Okay.
I mean, now the woodwork now.
Oh my goodness.
They're multiplying.
Brian, you have about ten, don't you?
I I I don't know.
Losing count now, huh?
But your wife does though.
God for her.
Absolutely. Okay, so what else we got?
Alright, well, let's uh go ahead and reconvene again, we'll call it to order. At six forty. Alright, so um essentially, we are reconvening to discuss if we have any follow-up items on uh the eight point poli- policies to uh reducing violence that uh Ernie covered very briefly and Brian elaborated on some of our training. You know, with this, uh we reviewed the study, uh Jamie, that uh John had sent over and that you had sent on and Ernie and I were and Brian, we're all discussing this until about nine o'clock last night. Trying to figure out in a way what kind of policies we have and uh where they become effective and and how they play out. We actually have, I think, seven of these eight policies pretty well covered within our own current policies. Um there are some minor um differences, but for the most part, they they are active in our policies currently and in our training. So um I I think, and that speaks volumes to our police force. Our police force, um like I mentioned in the email, it's had zero incidences of this. And so um they deserve our praise and they've done a great job for our community. They continue to be out there on the front lines doing that, so. Um I and I understand, you know, there's a lot of police brutality being publicized and it's all over the media and uh it, you can't ignore it, it's in your face and, you know, like I said in the email, all I can do is just shake my head at some of these that are, I'm just dumbfounded, like, why would you keep going? Why would you go down that path, it it doesn't make any sense, it's time, it it's it's time for some systematic changes on that. And, you know, as I was saying in the email, a lot of that comes from um the way these folks are raised or the environments that they find themselves in. And it, as we're seeing on the news, is it's, it's, it's not just aimed at people of color, it's it's across the board. But people of color suffer higher percentages per capita than what we see on, on on the other side. And so the disproportionate um effect there and and it's wrong, you know, and I I think that's just by recognizing it and identifying it and it is, it is a hard topic because, you know, our officers do a great job. And 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 we all know them personally and we know that they're good people, um and and it's it's, it's just sad that we all get painted with this big brush. And then we, we all have to eat the egg sandwich or we all have egg on our face because there's some idiot that that isn't following the policies or just, you know, is in the heat of the moment and loses his temper and retaliates against, you know, this individual that they've already gotten handcuffs or, or just explodes at them who's unarmed, i- it's anyways, i- it's frustrating, it's, it's sad. I I know that, you know, Brian and Ernie feel uh, you know, it it just, is is very saddening, they they have heavy hearts every time they see it. You know, we talk about it offline, we're always like, you gotta be kidding me. Um, you know, we have open conversations behind the scenes on these sort of things and and hopefully our leadership reflects that through our employee workforce that, that these, these types of things just that they're unacceptable on every level, so.
I I I think it's important, get this level of understanding that I can help uh improve upon just from my own personal experience and I just, or just based on some of the things that I know. These are the kinds of things that are important. And, you know, we've been uh known for having the most diverse counsel for a while now. You know, with me, Smart, the younger uh folks versus the older folks. We have a lot of different backgrounds and a lot of different experiences on our council. You know, we, I'm talking a lot about Smart, I migrating to this country as a black man and having to
Armed forces.
We're gonna have to navigate all of that. That's an experience that I don't know anything about, even though we're both black. Our backgrounds are completely different. We have a unique situation and we need to be able to take advantage of that to better educate ourselves and to understand uh how we can help our community to understand. You know, I don't know how that word gets out, but they see us and we are reflective of what we want a diverse community to look like. Young, old, black, white, uh we have mirror, Asian, and we do. We have an opportunity, we have an advantage, I think. And um and I know that many other councils would love to have what we have, but they don't.
I think Mayor, too, it's incumbent on us, right? We, uh you know, I think. Right, it's 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 not you and Smart's responsibility to educate us on the experience, right? It's our responsibility to go out and get educated ourselves and then come together and so I I think. Right, far too often, right, we're looking at our, you know, our colleagues and our community of color to. Teach us and and we have to change that narrative, right? I think it's it's now, it's time for us to to step out and go. And and go get educated ourselves.
That's right.
Continue that dialogue, right?
And and you know, you look at uh our backgrounds, right? You know, where did we grow up? What were our experiences? What kind of diversity did we have in our backgrounds? You know? Uh and I love to talk about my parents and how they raised us. When I was talking about my dad and the frustration that he felt as a black man, I need to say that he didn't talk to us about it. He never talked about it. He never said, do you know what these white people did to me and do you know how I was treated? He never said that to one of his sons, five of us. And it gave us the opportunity to learn how to deal with people based on integrity, credibility. And the kind of people we wanted to be around. They did talk about that. You know, there were a couple of girls that he said, no, that's not at your level, son, you need to. You know, those kinds of things, but you know, and and I appreciated that too. So, but uh we do, we have our unique experiences and. Uh we 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 never stop learning, right? We will never ever stop learning.
This is Smart. Um so, yeah, thank thank you, everyone. Great points. I mean, um. If you look at the the story I've always told, um every time people ask me, they said, uh why did you come to the United States? Or why did you leave uh your your why did you leave the country you left and come 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 over here? And the one thing I always point to everyone is the fact that the justice system is key. Go around the world, anywhere you go, you kind of like want to see what the justice system looks like. Take a trip, take a travel and see and you will kind of realize that the justice system here stands for the truth. It stands for what it stands for. And like Mike said, um when you have a situation where just a few individuals or a few uh. Six circumstances or scenarios play out, it kind of tends to kind of wipe all the goods out, you know? Um you 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 can, you can, you can just look at all the wonderful and amazing things that are going on. Or usually when the one thing that happens just comes up and it's the one that rares ahead, it kind of like wipes everything else out, you know? So it makes it so hard and uh 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 law enforcement are just put in this very difficult situation. Where they have to kind of like deal with the with the fact that I'm here to do my job and at the same time, I'm also trying by all means to stay out of this. Uh limelight, pretty much. But then it's just doing their job. In the in the in the heat of the moment of everything going on, it's like, it's not like in the movie scene where you do. Action court and action court and you go in the in the in the in the room and you kind of piece everything together and it looks all flawless and looks great. In that, in the heat of the moment, everything is happening fast paced, you know? And so the si- the situation is so difficult for everyone. And 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 when we have our law enforcement being put in a situation where they have to kind of make that split second decision. It's either their lives is online or they have to take someone else's life. I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of uh. Uh uh slippery uh uh environment that everyone is dealing with. A split second, anything can happen, you know? But again, it's just a matter of making sure that we have the right training, we have the right communication channels open. And we just continue to do our best because again, we are a society that everyone wants to be here, pretty much. I mean, we can see it. It's every day. Everyone wants to be here. Why? Because it's a great country. Why? Because of the justice system. It doesn't matter who you are. If you have committed any crime and there's enough evidence against you, you pay the price. And so if that happens, sure, that means everyone is treated equally, pretty much. And so the thing is. We just need to look at ourselves as humans first before anything else comes up. Pretty much, we're all breathing the same air, doing the same thing that everyone else is doing and at the end of the day. What calls for the room to start kind of trying to create any type of uh category or anything shouldn't even matter because. There is nothing that says when the pandemic shows up, it's speaking of anyone, even if there is like a category of uh any kind of uh um. Uh category of uh races that's kind of like more hit than the others, but it really doesn't matter. As long as you're breathing that air. You're you're susceptible, pretty much. You're 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 vulnerable to anything that's going on around you. And so to me, I just feel that it's a great opportunity for all of us to come together and try to work this and make sure that. No matter what the outcome of this is, we come out stronger and we come out understanding. And we come out loving and we come out united more and doing more things together because together we can get a lot of things done. Without having to be drawn back and all the 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 issues we're dealing with. Uh you're not sure to go to downtown or you're not sure to go somewhere because of whatever happens, anything can break. Uh loose and then you you're now, you're now in danger, right? Because in the in the in the heat of every moment of uh uh. Uh people that are coming together and creating any type of unrest, it's very hard to put any type of control in that situation and at that point. It doesn't matter what color you are. You can fall victim to anything that comes out of that. And so for me, I I see that as a as a as a as a as a direction that we're going. It's a it's a great one that. Uh everyone is talking to it. Everyone is kind of supporting it and I say, I appreciate all the uh the support that we've been getting. I appreciate all the love that's been coming our direction. And I also want to say, I support the police and I support what they do. They're doing a great job and they're doing a very, very fantastic job at it too. Thank you.
Thanks, Smart.
Wonderful to say, wonderful to say. I have a question. Why do we think this one? The death of George Floyd has created such a response. And I'm I'm talking about worldwide response. My mind was blown. They're protesting in South Korea, Germany, London. Australia. And you know, it's. I I don't know if I understand why.
I would, I would say that uh. You know, this spanned over eight minutes to forty six seconds. And I can't really think of any other death that went over a few seconds or ten seconds or whatever. This was over, this was almost nine minutes. And it was long and grueling and it was on camera and so I think that that would be, that would be response.
Yeah, eight eight minutes of unexcusable violence. Eight eight minutes of killing somebody on video. They could have thought to any moment. Like the 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 other ones, there's always the chance that maybe there was something that preceded the the video evidence. Maybe there was another side. This is indisputable evidence, but you have this person in custody. They are handcuffed, they are on the ground and you are suffocating them to death for eight minutes.
And you know, I would imagine that there's some people out there that don't feel as strongly about it, but I was thinking about it. And I have all of these people who love their pets. Do you know the kind of reaction there would have been if they had a video of somebody doing that to a dog?
Well, Ken, that uh right, in Central Park, so much of the outcry. Right, was how that woman held her dog on the leash, right? You know?
Yeah, so I mean, and and you know, we have all these different levels of anguish and concern. Uh some of the people who don't think this is a big deal are the same people that would be outraged if it were a dog, so. You know, we've got a lot to deal with. We really do. Uh but it's wonderful to see. That I think people really are kind of fed up. And being fed up means we gotta figure out what to do to prevent it from happening. And to be better, to make things better, and that's our job. That's our responsibility. And I love this conversation about the school age kids getting involved, the high schoolers. I I I think it would be a great opportunity to partner with uh Dr. Sue Reich and. Uh the school board uh to participate in whatever they think uh will be helpful for educating these kids. I mean, because that's where it begins. We have to make sure that all these young folks coming up. Are are broken from the possibility of uh hating this way. It must, to me, it must be a horrible existence to wake up every day and hate. Somebody that much just because they don't look like you. That must be a horrible existence.
Miserable.
And it's and it's an existence that's. For lack of a better term, unnatural to us as as human beings. You look at, uh you bring up the the kids and and. You you look at, uh I mean, I, mine are so young, they can't can't articulate it, uh but. You see that they their love has has no bounds for for anyone. Hate is something that's learned. It's not something that. I think is is part of us uh naturally.
Yeah, no, you're right. You put kids in room of every color that you can think of, from every background, they may fight over a toy. I want to play with this one and you have it, but it's not gonna be for any of yours.
Right. And I will say that the school district today put out a statement. There is some alarming activity going on in the school. There's a. Uh an eight minute challenge that kids are playing out and there's um. A lot of social media inappropriateness happening and a lot of. Uh racially, you know, some social media with racial slurs and. Uh you know, there's there it, there's a a whole, a whole spectrum of inappropriateness all the way up to just outright. Uh racist uh posts, but all of that is, I mean, you know, that has to be emulated of parents and surroundings and so forth, so. I I think it's even more crucial now that the school board and the students. Really try to affect change so that, right? Because we, I mean, we needed it all levels, right? We need, we need these dialogues in our homes. In our restaurants, at our government levels and uh that's the only way we're gonna kind of push through this, I think.
That's true.
And I noticed, uh Shauna, I think you just posted about Eric Garner uh there in the chat. And and you know, Ken, you posed the question earlier about why this one? And I a- and aside from the horrific nature of. Uh of this singular incident, I think we're also in the midst right now of with. Uh a pandemic and with the just society in general. That strangely enough, even though we're all isolated, communities have been coming together in a lot. Stronger ways than they have in a long time. And as a result, I think. People are willing to get behind each other a little bit more than they have have been. Um. The forced isolation has forced togetherness in in different ways or or pushed us to find different ways to be together. And as a result, I think. Um hopefully more people are willing to get behind each other, to support each other and and to do the right things. Just as a result of of the environment that we're in and uh.
I I think you're right, I think, you know, and maybe this will get us going in the right direction. I really do. Uh you know, I'd always hope that things would be better than they are at this stage of my life. I've seen more days than I'm going to see and I just want a better world for all of your children. For my youngest grandson, who's thirteen. The world has to be better for them. It has to be. You have to deal with this kind of stuff as young men and women, you know? To be able to go and do and enjoy and not have to worry about this kind of stuff. You know, I I pray for that, for these kids, for the younger generation.
To to truly meet the ideals that were set set out when we started or when this country was started. The idea that everyone, everyone has the the opportunity and the right to life, liberty. And the pursuit of happiness.
Yeah. Okay, team. This has been a good conversation and we certainly need to do more of it and you know, as we come up with ideas and thoughts. We can participate and what we can do uh as time marches on. We're still in this. Tough situation of being able to make uh to do uh community gatherings and all of that. Uh but you know, that's gonna be important in the future for us to be able to get together, be visible. And uh to let people know uh what we're, what we stand for and how important uh all of this is. Uh Mike can tell you that uh we have some pretty good people working on. Uh uh community outreach in terms of the transportation system plan. And what's gonna be happening with the master plan. We have mechanisms for communicating with our uh community. And we have to look at how can we take this kind of stuff and communicate with our communities as well.
With that being said, when um Ronnie, when will we get a copy of the resolution up on uh? Online on the website and Facebook and all that?
Monday morning.
And with that, I'd like uh each counselor and to come in and sign. Put pen to paper on this one.
I'll come in on Monday, yep. Can we just have a a quick talk about the state of the city? Mayor, are you just taking, you're gonna just talk and uh have our normal Zoom? I mean, not, you know what I mean, like, but I mean, it's a normal meeting with you giving kind of an update on the state of the city?
Okay, I can. Go ahead, Mayor.
No, 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 I was just gonna say that I I've uh uh TV. And Tualatin Valley Cable TV already filmed my uh. Uh presentation.
Okay, perfect.
I went over there, I guess it was uh Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, one day this week. Yeah, it was this week, right?
Yeah, this week.
Okay. I I'm always a little nervous because we did it in one take. So.
It's gonna be good. That means it's gonna be good.
And you know, when when I do something like this, of course Ronnie and Mike helped by giving me some bullet points to talk from. And they had it on a teleprompter and they were just designed to trigger my conversation. And at the end of it, I don't even remember what I said. I know I said what we were supposed to say, but and they said, well, no, this is good, you know, we don't need to. Uh I said, are you sure you don't need to do another tape? No, he said, you are, yeah, so I haven't seen it. I don't know what it looks like. But we are scheduled to present that first. Is that Ronnie? Ronnie, you take it for a minute now.
Yeah, so basically what's what's gonna happen, I believe we're set for five o'clock, I would say, on June seventeenth. Um we'll go ahead and open the meeting. Then we'll play the the mayor's message. Um I'm not sure how that's gonna work out quite yet. I'm I'm not sure if we're just going to. Play it on my computer and put it on Zoom. And then have TVCTV kind of take it from there and they can do their magic. Um but but.
I don't like using teleprompter. I don't count. Oh, it doesn't count using a teleprompter. Got it. I can read.
But and then after that, Mayor, we'll just go right into regular business. Um I think. Um I I don't know how long the mayor's video is going to actually be at this moment. I will have a better understanding here in a couple of weeks when. TVCTV gets done with their editing and doing their magic.
The long and the short of it is the rest of us don't have to prepare anything.
Correct. Yeah, this year, this year, you guys are exempt.
And Jamie, I want you to know that Ronnie and Mike made me do it this way. I I wanted you all to participate. But they said, no, that's not gonna happen this year. It's all on you.
That's because they knew if I was involved, it would take four hours.
But but there's, I think there's a good reason for it in this time. Um given our uh circumstances outside of King City. Given our circumstances outside of King City, given the the COVID nineteen situation, given the racial violence throughout the nation, given all the current it seems like compounding issues that we are facing. I felt it would mean more and have more well, the delivery would be better if it came straight from the mayor on, look, this is the state of your city and we are here to serve you. This is what we're doing to make that happen, and this is how we're going to get through this pandemic. And this is how we're going to get through the currents, the current events of the day and
More impactful.
I, yes, more impactful, and I wanted that more you know, one on one sense to be reaching into people's living rooms and letting them know what we're doing. And and I can't think of a better person to deliver that message.
Absolutely.
Now, let me ask a question about the rest of the program. I've started getting e-vites from all of these people, are they just going to sign on and listen to that part of it?
Yes, so basically, we we went from our normal state of the city, virtual state of the city, so all those e-vites that you're getting now are people that are attend, that will be attending through Zoom, which is going to be kind of crazy on my part, because now I'm going to have probably sixty seven people to deal with instead of twelve.
Let's mute him, Ronnie, just keep him muted.
So I'll ask this question, say, for instance, if we have a sponsor like PGE or Northwest Natural or the King City Foundation, if one of those sponsors wants to say something, are we allowing that?
Yeah, I mean, if 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 they call in to the meeting, yeah, we'll allow that.
Okay, all right, say, you know, because Troy Gagriano from PGE
Yeah.
has already reached out and said, you know, we're excited about some of the stuff that's going on in the future, you know, PGE is partnering and blah, 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 and if, of course, last year, we had Maria Pope, the CEO. And, you know, but I think it would be a good idea if one of those sponsors especially has something to say. We definitely want to be able to allow it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll I'll reach out to them and get that going.
Okay. Okay.
Motion.
Any other questions regarding that, Jamie?
No, that's good, I I just want to make sure I was doing what I need to do.
Okay, Shawna, you see what you've gotten yourself into?
It's all good.
It's it's a wonderful thing, I am happy that you're here, and this is a wonderful team. I couldn't be prouder of this team, I couldn't be more thankful to have everybody who, and you know, it's not a facade, we get along really well. We have the ability to talk about what's on our mind, and I really feel fortunate to be able to express my views and talk comfortably with you guys about the things that I see and feel. So thank you, educate, educate. The more you know, the more you'll be able to help, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, you guys, well done?
Yeah, motion taken.
Thank you.
Oh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion is adjourned, I just did it.
Second.
All right.
All right, meeting closes, closes at seven twenty.
All right, you guys.
Bye, guys.